We're going to get our meeting started. Thank you all very much for coming. Do appreciate your time. Those of you who are here in Tulamene in person and watching electronically, we are also recording this on a Sony camera so that in case we have any issues with our electronic feed, we'll be able to show the video feed that we have. And it's a little bit dark for those of you if you're watching on that video feed because we're going to keep the slideshow presentation in the view as well. We'll have some information on who is speaking and some of the details for tonight's meeting. But first of all, I'd like to introduce the vice chair of the regional district, also the mayor of Princeton, both roles, Mayor Spencer Coyne, Vice Chair Spencer Coyne.
Thank you. First off, I want to just send regrets from the chair. He wasn't able to make it tonight. And also sending regrets for my dad, the director. We've got a family health situation, so he's dealing with that. So before we start, I want to just acknowledge that we are in the unceded traditional territory of the Upper Sumalkeemine Indian Band. And I'm welcome you all here tonight, and I thank you for coming out. Education and the information hopefully that we will receive tonight should answer a lot of our questions. And if not, we will have a list of things that we can all go after people for later. So, thank you for coming, and I'm going to hand it back to Eric.
Thank you Spencer Coyne. All right, a couple of quick notes before we get started. We are recording this meeting, as I mentioned, it is being broadcast electronically on WebEx. So for people who are watching electronically, we want to make this meeting as informational as possible. So if you do have any questions when we get to the Q and A sections, if you could please step up to that microphone at the back, or we could bring the microphone over to you. But we want to make sure that we can hear you. Otherwise, for those watching on WebEx, it'll sound, and that's not very good. So we want them to be able to hear. Also, as we go through the meeting, there are going to be questions that come up, of course. And what we're going to try to do is stick to a format that makes this meeting as functional and useful as possible for everyone involved. So we'll have our presenters speak, we'll then have time for Q and A at the end of that presentation. We understand there may be things that come up during that presentation, but ideally, if we can, we'd like to let our presenters finish what they have to say. Hopefully, they can answer many of your questions during their presentation. And we do have some washrooms, just so you know. If you look at the back of the room, you'll see the washrooms off over to the right-hand side, from my right, your left. And emergency exits, that door there, that one over there, we have an emergency exit back here as well, for those of you who are here at the Tulamene Community Center. And I'll mention the panelists that we have, and then introduce our very first speaker, and we'll get right to it. So we have a number of people who are going to speak tonight. Again, hopefully, the idea is to answer as many of your questions with that presentation, but likely it may bring up a few new questions, and that's your opportunity to ask those questions. Our plan is, after this meeting, to compile the information that we've gathered, both questions that possibly couldn't be answered tonight, some of the important points that you brought up tonight, and put that out in an information release over the next day or two, to make sure that anything that came up here that wasn't answered will be answered in a very timely manner. Our presenters include Rick Pelashetik. Did I say that correctly? Close. Rick is a section head with Water Management Thompson Okanagan Region. He's with the Ministry, formerly of Flynn Ward, Forest Lands, Natural Resource and Rural Development Operations. It's a long name. And your department now, who are you with now? Forests. It's a new department. We also have Trevor Bohay here. That's much easier for your business card. Trevor Bohay is the Director of Community Recovery with Emergency Management British Columbia. We'll hear from those two gentlemen shortly. We also have Trevor Keir. Trevor is the Recovery Manager for the Regional District of Okanagan-Sumalkeemine. Trevor is over there. We will hear from Kaylee Schofield, or Schofield. She is the Director for the Recovery Project out of Princeton, and she is here speaking about the Resiliency Centre services. So for many of you, Resiliency Centre, that Resiliency Centre is going to be an important place, and probably already has. And with that, I should quickly mention, I appreciate that there are some very specific concerns that some people in this room will have, and some people watching online. If we can't answer your specific questions tonight, we will be happy to take that offline. Many of you have probably already spoken with people like Trevor to deal with some issues that are important to you as a homeowner, as a property owner, and some of those might not be, this might not be the ideal venue for you. You're more than welcome to come up and talk directly with Trevor, or some of the other people here, and follow up. All of their contact information will be available as well. Also speaking tonight, I mentioned Trevor Bohay. He'll be here on a couple of different topics. Also, Rachel Carey, the Manager Recovery and Funding Programs, Disaster Financial Assistance, I believe. Is that right? There she is. We have Kylie Odell, Roads Area Manager with the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. And from the Ministry of Environment, Norm Fowles is here, and he'll talk about the River Debris Project, which you've probably seen and heard a bit about. We're going to start off tonight from the Ministry of Forests with Rick Pelashetik, and he is going to talk a bit about the role of the Ministry of Forests, some of the work in and around streams, and things that you as a property or homeowner would need to know, and the role of the Ministry of Forests with regard to water management. And again, after this presentation, we'll have time for Q and A. So if we can ask Rick to come on up and address the crowd, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. Yeah, so, as mentioned, we, you may have known us previously as Flynn Ward back, but just a couple of weeks ago, we've, they've split into two different ministries, and our, the Water Management Group is in Ministry of Forests. And I'm not sure if, will you be providing the presentations afterwards, or?
The slideshows?
Yeah. Okay. But if my contact information's there, then, yeah, okay. Yeah, so if you've got any questions after tonight, please just send me an email, and I'll do what I can to provide the answers. So, when it comes to flooding, we, our Water Management Group, we've got basically two main roles. The first role is on flood preparation, and working with the Regional District and with Emergency Management BC, who you'll hear from a little bit later, on, on looking at what are the issues that we expect for this year? What type of flows are we seeing? And we'll work with the River Forecast Centre out of Victoria, who provide forecasting for the lakes and rivers across BC, and we provide more local information to help them with the forecasting. Oh, sorry. Does someone run in the slides? Okay. Sorry about that. Yeah, so that's kind of the first task we do, is during the flood, during, or preparing for the flooding. The main thing I'll talk about is on the next slide, on permitting for works in and above a stream. Yeah, so if you're, yeah, that slide. Okay, thanks. So for flood mitigation, flood protection work, if you're doing work within the stream, basically in the stream channel itself, you need a permit under the Water Sustainability Act. And so that's what Trevor asked me to talk briefly about tonight. So we provide regulatory oversight for those types of works, and they're often referred to as Section 11 out of the Water Sustainability Act. What we don't do is, is our, my group is not in charge of maintaining dykes. There's a lot of what we call orphan dykes, both along the Tulamene and Sumalkeemine River. We don't maintain those. The other thing we will do is we will comment on applications that local governments can put for provincial and federal funding for flood protection work. So we can provide technical advice on those applications. I'll just wait for the next slide. Yeah. So when is a permit required? If you're doing work within a stream. So a stream is a river, lake, wetland. And basically, if you're below the top bank, then you're considered within the stream. So doesn't necessarily mean you're in the water, but even if you're on the bank itself, placing riprap on the bank, that works within a stream. So you would require a permit for that. The typical works that you'd be doing after a flood are obviously riprap and bank protection work. It could be if you're putting in a bridge or culvert for an access crossing, that type, that's the type of work we've been approving, especially over the last few months. There's been dozens and dozens of applications that we've been processing, especially in the Coldwater-Nichola area, but in along the Tulamene and Sumalkeemine as well. And just a quick safety alert that, we'll get into this in a little bit on my next talk, but the river has obviously been destabilized by the flooding in November. And if you're along the riverbank, just to be careful, a lot of those banks are very unstable now. Next slide, please. So, what we consider when we get an application is really what are the impacts on the environment, on other properties, license holders, water license holders? That's what we consider when, if you're applying to do work within the stream, really what we're looking at is, okay, what is the impact on other parts of that stream to other And in most cases, if it's significant work, we recommend hiring a consultant, whether that's an environmental consultant or an engineer, to assist with the application and with the design. Next slide. And then just a couple, few things of note. If you are a water license holder, and there's been damage to your water intake, generally that does not require a permit from our group. It can be done under your water license. So it really just, just contact the water officer, also within the Ministry of Forests, to confirm that. But in most cases, you don't need any type of permit to reinstate or to protect your water intake. Another thing to remember is that Fisheries and Oceans Canada also have a separate permitting process. So please contact them as well if you're doing, going to be doing any work. Over the last few months, we've been working pretty closely with DFO to turn these applications around quite quickly. But you do need to contact them also. And I also get, sometimes I'll get questions during a flood emergency on why the local government can go in and do work and they can't. But under the regulation, there's a provision there for local governments to go in, do emergency works during a flood. And then they provide reporting afterwards, rather than having to go through Section 11 application in the middle of a flood. Next slide. The main thing, if you're, if someone's new to this type of process, we've set up a separate, really a kind of a streamlined system. The main thing from this slide is really to contact Front Counter in Kamloops. They've been set up to deal with these types of applications. We've been processing a lot of them this spring or prior to Frichette, and we expect a lot more to come in the summer, when the flows are low again, for people wanting to do more work. So that's the main thing, is, and the people in Front Counter and Kamloops, they've been dealing with this the last few months, and they'll help you out. Yep, and I think that's it for this presentation, if there's any questions.
Thank you very much, Rick. So I've got the microphone here. If you have a question, if you want to put your hand up, I can come and find you. I wanted to get things started. I want to put you on the spot if you don't mind, Rick. You brought up a point that I can see a property owner wanting to ask. During a flooding event where a local government could go in and do some work, if someone felt their property, their home, or their, any of their property was threatened, and they wanted to get in some water area and do some work, what would happen then? What's the ramifications? What are some of the considerations, other than, of course, the safety considerations?
Yeah, well, what I would recommend is if, I mean, obviously, they could be sandbagging or any type of work, I would recommend you do it out of the stream, work on top of the bank, whether you're placing material down or sandbags. But I mean, we're not, we're not out to get anybody for doing work during a flood, but really it's best practice to work from the top of bank, if you're going to be protecting your property during the flood.
All right, and Section 11 seem a little bit daunting. If people want some one-on-one, and they want to talk to you and just ask you some questions, we have your contact information. Can they give you a call, send you an email, and ask those questions if they're having trouble navigating the system?
Yep, definitely, for sure. Yeah.
All right. Any questions for Rick before we move on? We'll hear back, we'll hear from Rick a little bit later on as well. Again, he's from Ministry of Forests. Anybody? In case I missed them? Okay. Trevor Keir is the Recovery Manager for the Regional District of Okanagan-Sumalkeemine. Did you want to jump in? If you do, I'll give you the microphone so we can hear you.
Rick, would you like to comment at all on the efforts that Flynn Ward was involved in, like after the floods, and all the sort of, just briefly on the river evaluations you were doing, and structures and things like that?
Well, what we've, I mean, what we were doing during the November flooding is, we did do a lot of reconnaissance. We did some helicopter flights. I'm thinking both on the Tulamene and the Coldwater-Nichola, just to get a sense of what the damage was. And then we would provide that information, I mean, we're, all the government's agencies were working together at that time. So we would provide information back to Emergency Management BC, to Ministry of Highways. They would provide the same back to us. And so it helped us prepare for, we knew what type of applications we were going to be getting, after we were able to see the damage that was done. And, you know, what, I mean, everyone here's probably seen it by now, but, you know, you've got some areas where people have lost acres of land, and you've got other areas where there's been deposition of material. So really, it was just going out, doing those reconnaissance, and getting that information out to the different agencies that need it.
Okay, and quickly, we're going to, did you have another point, Trevor? Okay, we're going to move on, but one quick question we did have is, is there a cost for the Section 11 itself for that permit?
Yes, for the permit, I forget, is it $200?
$200?
Yeah.
Okay. And Mayor Coyne, Vice Chair of the RDOS, has a quick question, and we will give him the microphone.
Just a quick question. If, say you live here, and the flooding occurs on Crown Land before your home, is there a way to get approvals on Crown Land, or is there a way to get the ministry to do something on there?
Yeah, there's, that's a very good question.
Happened lots.
There is a way, but it would require more than just a permit from me. It will require, well, it could, what I can issue is called a permit on Crown Land, and I would work with our Crown Lands Department, also in the Ministry of Forests, on allowing that type of work to take place on the Crown Land itself. So it's, you know, it's a little longer process, but it's definitely, and we've seen that in other jurisdictions, not just in here, too. So far, that's just, that's on the homeowners. We haven't, nobody's come up with a process for reinstating land on Crown Land. So, you know, my department's really just looking at what applications come in and how we're going to process them. We know that's an issue, that there's been, the rail trail, both along here and along the Nicola, has been wiped out in some areas. And I don't think anyone's here from wreck sites and trails, but I know that's something they're, they're looking at, but it's, that'll be a ways down the road, I think.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll remind people who are watching online through WebEx that you can ask questions in the question and answer, the Q and A section, if they want to ask any questions. We don't see any right now. Before you head out, the information you were just talking about, is a lot of that available through Front Counter BC, available online, or if they were to phone you to get some of the specifics? Because that sounds like it's going to require a bit more information than just something you might see on a website.
Yeah. No, Front Counter BC is the best people to ask, yeah.
All right, with that, I think we'll move on. We do have a lot more to get to. I wanted to bring up Giles. Giles is with Disaster Psycho-Social Services, and he was going to just give us a quick introduction to why he's here. Often what happens, as you all very well know, during emergencies, is it can be very stressful. It can be a difficult time for not only first responders and property owners, but just people in the community. And Giles is going to address that for us. Thank you, Giles.
Thanks so much. Yeah, so that's exactly it. My role here is basically to provide support for yourselves. I recognize that it's been more than a stressful time. I've been attending Princeton and Tulamene since November 15th. Have a pretty good relationship with Jody, who has been, you know, tirelessly working with all of you and making sure that things are moving forward. So I'm basically going to be floating around if anybody is experiencing any sort of understandably level of heaviness from what's going on. I mean, it's been a stressful period of time. You're free to come on back. There's a whole bunch of wellness resources at the back. I think there's going to be a slide that's going to be put up here with my work phone number, as well as another toll-free number that you can call at any point to reach out and get some support. If any of you are feeling a level of heaviness where it's difficult to overcome in this time, just because of everything that's going on, and the conversations that are happening, you're more than welcome to come and chat with the back. And the fire chief has happily opened up the doors to go and speak privately over there. I do want to say, whenever the, my number comes up, which is, you know, technology is sometimes difficult, there it is. Look at that. It's free and confidential. Okay? So I am just here as a support for yourselves, if you need it. And you can call now, or you can call any other time. All right. Thanks so much.
Giles, thank you very much. And I just wanted to remind you again, I don't even know if I introduced myself, but my name's Eric. I'm the Communications Coordinator with the Regional District of Okanagan-Sumalkeemine. I also work as an Information Officer in the Emergency Operations Center through the RDOS, and I've been pretty busy over the last several years, since 2018 with floods and wildfires. So I've seen some of you before, and I've been up in this community many times, and it is nice to be back here, not necessarily under these circumstances. Often I've come here to camp or to hike the HBC Trail, but it is a beautiful place you live in. Thank you for welcoming us here tonight. For those of you watching on WebEx, I will be the voice off to the side of the screen because it's a little more convenient for me to hide over here, because we have a laptop, and we have our Information Services Operator here, Danny, who's helping us out and making sure we stay connected with those of you watching electronically. So we do have that Q and A open, and I'm just monitoring a laptop right now to see if we do have any questions. Our next presenter is Norm Fowles. He is with, he's the Chief Environmental Emergency Program DOC Ops, I should say, with the Ministry of Environment. Now, Norm is going to talk about debris removal, the project, an explanation of the project itself and the goals, and then we'll have time for Q and A as well. Norm, go ahead, please, and if you can give us your correct title, sorry about that.
No worries. Hello, everybody. My name is Norm Fowles. I'm with BC Ministry of Environment, with Environmental Emergency Program. My environmental emergency program are not really about this sort of stuff. We're all about the hazmat and spills. So slightly different, but as our program, I got tagged with leading provincial efforts when it comes to debris removal. And as you can see around your community here, that there's been a lot of activity happening in and around the Tulamene-Sumalkeemine areas. We know that the atmospheric river event really did impact not only this area, but a good chunk of the Southern Province. So it is an historical event, and what we're trying to accomplish has been, has been unprecedented for my program anyways. So maybe if you could just go ahead, I can explain a little bit what we're all about. So our main areas of focus really is flood monitoring. And when I say flood monitoring, what we're really talking about is sampling. If you watch the news and all that, for the Lower Mainland, the Fraser Valley, they had a lot of impacts. So down that particular area, we have now set up a flood monitoring. It's more about sampling, just to see what those extended impacts are. The second part is waste disposal. What we know about waste disposal is, it's all about, how do you get the stuff that's been impacted on your properties? How do we get it off your properties? And for local governments, local governments take a strong role when it comes to waste disposal. Our job with the ministry really is to facilitate and expedite, and help get that waste off your properties and to our proper disposal part. The part I really want to focus on in this presentation is the water course debris removal. And that's, that's been a big chunk of what we're doing right now, is trying to get that waste that's in, that has moved from people's properties, that anthropogenic material, man-made debris, trying to get it out of the water course. So this just talks a little bit about the Flood Monitoring Water Quality Task Force. We have a group that's set up for the Lower Mainland, and then we have another roundtable group that's looking at Merritt, Princeton areas. And then waste disposal, like I talked about, waste really is, you know, it's about that collected and categorized material. That's the stuff that we want to get to our proper disposal. And then the stuff that I'm going to be talking about is the debris that's collected in a water course. So, if you could just go one more. That's just, maybe back up just one. That's some of the materials that we've addressed today. So our three main priorities is the anthropogenic, man-made type debris. That's our number one priority. That's what we're working on right now to get out of the water courses. Two, it's the large-widie debris. In this particular area, we have a lot of large-widie debris. And we've prioritized those sites. Price Waterhouse Cooper has been our contractor that the province has hired to help manage and coordinate. So some of you have may have been contacted by Price Waterhouse Cooper about some of the impacts, what the materials that have gone into a water course. When it comes to large-widie debris, really what we're focusing on is those big log jams, those big large piles that are out there that could, that are directly attributed to protect the, affecting public safety and infrastructure. As Brick's group and other folks within various ministries, we do have to consider the aquatic wildlife habitat that large-widie debris provides for your, for your water courses. It is part of Mother Nature, and we do know it's vitally important to our water courses. Could you just back up one? And then the last thing that we're focused on, and I know this is a And then the last thing that we're focused on, and I know this is a big issue for particularly just this particular community, is the sedimentation. So we do have people that have been hired to go look at some of the sedimentation issues that are out there. We have qualified environmental professionals. They're out there looking at the sedimentation issues, and they're providing recommendations. We know this is a sensitive subject, that there's a lot of concerns when it comes to sedimentation, about the buildup. We have to consider the aquatic life. We have to consider some of the public safety type issues too. So those reports are being developed as we speak, and we're hoping to have a lot of those reports for your area here by the end of this week. So for Tulamin River, we have 52 sites that have been identified to date, 21 large-widdy debris sites. LWD stands for Large Woody Debris, of which nine sites have been approved. One of those sites is just not that far away from here. And I just got a recent update as of today of the stuff that we've actually taken out of the water courses. For the west Tulamin area, we've got three vehicles, one trailer, two ATVs, and two building-like structures. From between Tulamin and Colmont, we have one vehicle, one trailer, and a bunch of miscellaneous metal and other debris. From Colmont to Princeton, we have one vehicle, one trailer, and a propane bullet to date. And then east of Princeton, we have one vehicle that's been removed to date. We've had a lot of, and I can't stress enough, a lot of logistical challenges in trying to get this debris out of the river, and we're doing our hardest to get it out before the fresh yet. Are we going to get all of it out? Probably not before fresh yet, but we are working our hardest right now. Right now, we've got heavy lift helicopters. These are the big, heavy helicopters. They'll be starting tomorrow to start taking debris out of the Spies and the Nicola Rivers system. So a lot of logistical challenges. We were hoping to be a little bit further ahead by this time, but we are making progress. And I also can tell you that, maybe just go on one more slide and then I'll get into the rest. So this is our debris action plan. It's updated every week. I have extra copies on my back table if you're interested to see what it looks like for your particular area. A lot of this information is also captured online, so you can go there and you can see the daily reports. And I do have a web link at the end of this presentation. So for this Similkamene River area, we have 17 sites that have been identified, of which there's five large-widdy debris sites, three vehicles that we've been identified, and nine other sites that have a lot of miscellaneous debris. One of the things that's been a bit challenging is, these were the sites that were identified by an aerial reconnaissance that was done early in the year. So you've probably heard a lot of the helicopters flying over and trying to identify the stuff when it's winter-like conditions out there. It's been a bit problematic. And what the crews are finding when they get out there in the water courses is that they would find a vehicle and a bunch of large-widdy debris, and then underneath it, there's other vehicles in there. There's other debris in there. So it's been, it's been challenging. We are finding stuff. There is a portal that I'll show you at the end of this presentation where people can actually, if you're seeing debris in a river, you can actually report it, and our Price Waterhouse Cooper folks, they are looking at website daily. So this is, again, just part of that debris action plan. This is for the Similkamene River. On our debris action plan, it comes out every week. It's always updated, and we'll have on there all the items that have been identified to date, plus which items actually have been removed. So this is our website. You can go to. On this website, there's the debris map. You can go in there and see exactly all this stuff that's been identified to date. There's a report debris portal. You can go there and actually report it in. Like I said, Price Waterhouse Cooper's is, PWC is monitoring that daily. And then the new one is these project updates. If you just go to the next slide. On the project updates, that'll have the latest information, and it will be updated either daily or every two days. And we'll be putting the stuff on there as to exactly what's been removed, some of the latest information and regional bullets. And you'll see that we do have a, we do have a one site there for Similkamene-Tulamin, where you can actually go and see the regional bullets. I believe that one is just starting to be updated. It just went live on Friday, so. The other thing I just wanted to add is that our focus right now is debris removal, but this is not going to stop just with trying to get all this information out, all the debris out, is we do have established a Provincial Secretariat to look at some of the larger implications, some of the larger issues, and that'll be going on for the next 18 months. So that is something that we're just ramping up. My program will eventually be transitioning over to that Provincial Secretariat, of which it'll be continuing it on, on all the work that we've been doing to date for the next approximately 18 months or so. So hopefully it answers some of your questions. I probably haven't answered everything you wanted to know, but I do have time for any questions.
Okay, I'm going to just come on over there with the microphone. We have a couple of questions up front here. Stand by for just a moment. Just a reminder, everyone, in just a short while, we'll be talking a bit about looking ahead to freshet and what we can expect and preparedness and that type of thing. Go ahead, please, sir.
Thank you. I'm not very good at speaking, but you're good. We're in San Angeles State, and I see there's a table over there. There's a full table here. We have, I could make a phone book out of people that have called, and they've told me to call so-and-so, and they've told me to call so-and-so. Seven o'clock Sunday morning, I had guys, three guys at my house from Alberta, that said, okay, we're looking at this mess you have. They figured 50 to 60 truckloads in my yard, the same as everybody else here, and everything was a go. It looked like the weight was lifted off us. I gave the word that everything was okay, and today, another department rolled in and said, we're not even going to be covered. Now, this is getting to the point of being pretty, pretty crazy. I mean, people don't deserve this. They at least deserve some proper answers.
So what can you say? There is some confusion. There's lots of different ministries, local government involved. What can you say to people about that?
Yeah, I appreciate where you're coming from and the frustration. Look, my backyard, you can't appreciate anything.
Okay, so I just want to clarify here one thing, that everyone who's come here tonight is here to ask questions and hopefully get answers, and anyone who is working in local government or in any other area is here to provide the best information they can. So I think your point's made. I think there's only so much we can say about that, is that no one's trying to confuse anyone. But if there is confusion, as far as it relates to the work that you're doing on debris removal, what's the best course of action for people to get the answers they need, would you say?
Yeah, so we do have, Price Waterhouse Cooper's is our representative. They have been reaching out. We do have a person there when it comes to community relations, and you're more than welcome to contact that person. We can try to address your questions directly. It's not another department.
So in what I'm going to say, I just want to keep the meeting as comfortable for everyone as possible. So if you have any specific concerns about your own property, then what we'll do is put you in touch with people and try to answer those questions. None of it's that easy. Well, I think there's a good, if you want to leave your name and number, sir, I can guarantee someone will give you a call tomorrow. I think that's probably what we want to do in this situation. I can understand the frustration, believe me. But you have a question, sir. Go ahead, please. I'm going to hold the microphone if you don't mind.
Yeah, Andy Whitmore here, from San Ang. My question is on the large-widdy debris. Is that only in the water course, or is it also on private land?
No, we're focusing on the large-widdy debris that's actually in a water course.
On the water course.
Pardon me? Within the water course footprint itself, yes, correct.
The repairing area, for those of you watching on WebEx. Did you have a follow-up, sir?
No, that's fine.
All right, and Trevor Keer is the Recovery Manager for the Regional District of Okanagan and Similkamene. Go ahead, Trevor.
Thank you. So I have been contacted by a number of residents or property owners and have been loading up debris imagery that we become aware of at the RDOS that gets shared with us. And specifically to the question that Mr. Whitmore just asked, that is something that we have loaded up, and we are having communications with the Ministry of Environment about, and Price Waterhouse Cooper's. So I had my latest correspondence with them today about what could or could not be done there, and there's more discussion to talk about that. So just for the previous gentleman as well, I would be happy to try to facilitate those kind of questions.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think that's a really good point. Obviously, if there's frustration, if people aren't getting the answers, no one wants to pass the buck. Trevor has been working closely with a lot of different people and speaking with them, so he can hopefully provide more information. I think with that, unless we have any other questions, we're going to move on to our next section. We have a gentleman over here, excuse me. I wanted to mention this while, we do have other representatives from the Regional District of Okanagan and Similkamene here. If you have questions specific to the Regional District, go ahead, sir. I'm going to hold the mic if you don't mind, just because I'm going to keep it flowing.
I was just wondering if you're going to remove the debris out of the river, like the log jams, et cetera. Do you think the river is going to maintain its original course? Is it going to move over to where it was originally? Are you open for this?
Yeah, you know, I'm not a river guy. I'm a hazmat guy. So I can't, honestly, I can't answer your question.
One of our other guests tonight will be talking a bit more about the river. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Very good question. Just take a quick scan of the room here, see if we have any other questions. Looks like we're good then for Norm Fellows. Norm, thank you very much. That was a great presentation. Appreciate it. Will your slideshow be available as well if people want it?
Yeah, if people want it, you're more than welcome. Like I said, we have our debris action plan at the back. You're more than welcome to get a copy of that. And please go to our website so you can see those daily updates.
Okay, excellent. Well, thank you very much. And the plan is then we'll take the slideshows, which I believe Danny has on his computer. We'll make them available as PDF, so you can take a look, and some of the contact information is there as well. As I mentioned, we do have representatives from the Regional District of Okanagan and Similkamene here. If there are any localized questions that come up regarding the Regional District's role in all of this, we, of course, are facilitating this meeting, but a lot of the questions you have will likely relate to some of the provincial ministries, including the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. And Kylie Odell is here. She is a Roads Area Manager. She's going to provide a general update, including an overview of some of the impacted areas, the current recovery plan, and some of the current projects as well. Kylie, go ahead, please, and thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Good evening, everyone, and I just wanted to say thank you again to the RDOS for organizing it. It's nice to get so many different responsibility centers in the same room to answer some questions. So as mentioned, I'm just going to go over where we were, where we are, and where we're going in terms of what the Ministry of Transportation is doing for reconstruction after the flooding. I also just wanted to mention that my slideshow does contain some pictures. So again, if any of that brings up any sort of uncomfortable feelings, we do have the resources available. So this is just my, oh. Thank you again to our wonderful tech guy. He's doing a great job this evening. All right, there we go. So that's the, just the title slide there, and I'm sure you're all familiar with where that is. That's our beloved Tulamin about two days after the first Atmospheric River event. So, next slide, please. So we'll just start by discussing some of the initial damage. And again, this is just going to be a very high-level overview, so it won't encompass all of the areas, but it's just to get a general picture. So we can load that? Yes. So initially, there are 50-plus slides in Service Area 8. I say plus because we're still discovering some sites now that the snow is starting to melt in some areas. But that was starting, our starting figure. We identified over 50 sites initially. This included not only the Princeton area, but Colmont, Tulamin, and then some structure sites in Caramias. So our sites included not only Highway 3, but also numerous structures and side roads. And so just pictured there is the Tulamin River Road before we started any reconstruction. Next slide. So the initial figures for the entire province were over $450 million in damage province-wide. I think that figure has ballooned significantly as we've been identifying more and more sites across the province, as well as taking into consideration how much reengineering is going to be required, and also just the inflation that we're seeing on some of our reconstruction costs. Some, so some additional initial effects was there was full east-west closures of all the highways in the province. And then for one month, Highway 3 ended up being the only major east-west connection through the province. And so there is just a picture of Highway 3. Next slide. So just to look at some constituents who were affected in the area. So Service Area 7, our neighboring service area, which is out of the Chilliwack office, experienced significant damage on their side of Highway 3, which caused a full closure for several days and cut off that connection. So for anyone who needed to go through there, whoops, sorry. Some other roads that were affected by cutoffs for constituents were Stevenson Creek Road, the Tulamin River Road, and Colmont Road between Tulamin and Service Area 14, which is out of Merritt. I know there were some other side roads as well that experienced some temporary cutoffs, such as Rice Road, Wallace Creek Road. And so just pictured there is actually a site that we're still very actively dealing with on Stevenson Creek Road in the Princeton area. Next slide. So enough of that. Let's discuss some of the more positive stuff, some of the work that's been done to date. So I just wanted to note that any sites that I talk about as completed may still be very temporary in nature. We might be waiting for hydrology, some of our bridge capacity assessments, other engineering reports of that nature, or we may also require final works to be completed in warm weather, such as paving, revegetation, that sort of thing. So to date, this was as of two weeks ago, our maintenance contractor has advised they have completed 20-plus sites. Again, plus as a rough figure because we are discovering new ones, or some sites we've had to go back and fix again, just depending on if there's continued movement at a site. We've also managed to relocate two bridges, or they've just been lifted, received new abutments, and put back in place. And all of our sites have moved from a response phase to a recovery phase. And so just pictured there is some of the work that was going on on Colmont Road. Next slide. So some of our larger sites have been assigned separate project teams. So again, if I'm not able to answer your questions tonight, or if you have questions about a very specific site, I will certainly take your question back and make sure that you are connected with the correct people, including the project managers at these sites. So some of those sites include the Tulamin River Road, the Bromley Shoulder Erosion on Highway 3 right near Bromley Park, and Stevenson Creek Road. So we do anticipate that additional repairs may be required, depending on the outcome of this upcoming freshet 2022 season. Just some collaborations that we want to celebrate is we were able to work with the RDOS to repair the dike along Highway 3, and we were also able to work with the Town of Princeton to install the signals at the intersection. It was a request from the municipality due to the large volume of traffic that we've seen numerous times through the Princeton area, and it was great that we were able to get that done despite the unseasonable weather conditions that our wonderful maintenance contractor was working in. To date, we've had 40, or pardon me, 54 pieces of equipment working full-time since November. We've placed over 50,000 cubic meters of rock. We've been able to engage nine local contractors, so it's great that we're engaging the communities who live and work in these areas for the repairs. And AIM has logged over 3,400 overtime hours since November, trying to get some of these sites put back together. And that's just a picture of some of the work on the shoulders at Highway 3. So outstanding works. We do anticipate that recovery will be over several years. We're also still working on freshet sites from the 2018 season, so we do anticipate a few more years of reconstruction ahead. Access has been restored to displaced properties except for Stevenson Creek Road, and we're still actively working on that one with the project team. There are also two bridges in need of complete reengineering, so we anticipate that those will take a bit of time to replace as well. And so just pictured there is some of the work that was going on a couple weeks ago on Tulamin River Road. So that's the end of my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions.
All right. Do we have any questions for Kylie? Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. It's been a challenging time for the last several years, not just in the last little while. Any questions online, Danny? It looks like we don't have any questions online. I just want to mention as well, I did mention Area H, Electoral Area H, but we, of course, are talking about this Atmospheric River event that affected a lot of areas, G and B included, but throughout the entire province. Before you take a seat then, quickly, biggest challenge for the Ministry of Transportation- Before you take a seat then quickly, biggest challenge for the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure as we head into Freshet, what are you looking at right now? Is there, you must obviously have some priority areas keeping traffic flowing.
Yeah, our biggest challenge right now, and this sounds ridiculous, is finding rock that we're able to use. It is not easy to source. So if you know anyone who has a private source that may or may not be tested, we're happy to engage the necessary services for testing. That would make such a huge difference, not only to repair the sites that we're working on now, but we would also ideally like to have a stockpile in case we do have any new sites from this Freshet season. But finding usable materials has probably been the biggest challenge for us so far.
Is that what we would call riprap?
Yes.
The large rock?
Yeah, and we need big, we call them the soldier row. So there's lots of smaller pieces that are available, which is great for sort of your top layers, but we're looking for those big rock that we can use at the bottom to really stabilize the new building that we're doing.
Okay, Kylie, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Kylie's slideshow will be available as well. And again, that is Kylie Odell. She is a Roads Area Manager with the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. We're going to move on now to Emergency Management BC. Trevor Bohay is the Director of Community Recovery. Rochelle Carey is the Manager of Recovery and Funding Programs. Disaster financial assistance is what she deals with as well. So we'll ask Trevor and Rochelle to come on up. I think Trevor's going to start things off. And again, if you have any questions for them at the end of this presentation, we'll have time for that. And then, of course, we'll move on to talking about some of the other resources. Canadian Red Cross will be here, and then we'll get into Freshet and looking ahead. And this is Trevor Bohay to start things off. I believe you're going to start, Trevor, or Rochelle?
I can start. I think I'll try, I'll try and be quick. So thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. So again, Trevor Bohay, Director of Community Recovery for Emergency Management BC. Our program works with local government to help them facilitate the community recovery plans that they've all been working on hard, hard on on your behalf. So essentially, we, we can fund the hiring of a community recovery manager, and almost all of the communities that were affected have taken us up on that. And then those managers have been working very hard within their, within their communities to understand what the needs are. And then they come to Emergency Management BC, to our program, to try and facilitate that recovery. Might be looking for funding sources and helping to fast-track permitting and that sort of thing. So that's some of the things that we assist with. I will say that the event is unprecedented, so we've never had to do this on this sort of scale. So we've been working hard to try and find funding for things that we wouldn't normally typically fund, and that obviously is a work in progress in some, in some areas. But I want you to know that your, your community recovery managers, including Trevor, are working very hard on your behalf. So I'll leave it at that and let Rochelle talk, because she's talking about disaster financial assistance, which I think will be important to everybody, and I'll be around to answer any questions.
Thanks, everybody. My name is Rochelle Carey, and I'm part of the Disaster Financial Assistance Team. Thank you to the RDOs for inviting myself and the other speakers here tonight to connect with you. So disaster financial assistance was authorized in response to the November 14th to December 2nd atmospheric river event that impacted the coast and southern half of the province. The application deadline for that event was March 3rd. Disaster financial assistance is an essential disaster aid program that's administered in accordance with the regulation. This is important to note because this means that we have no authority to deviate from what it says in regulation. Disaster financial assistance is not meant to replace insurance, nor is it available for insurable losses. Disaster financial assistance is also prohibited from paying for land erosion. There are five categories in which you can apply for disaster financial assistance. Homeowners, small business owners, farm owners, charitable organizations, and residential tenants. For tenants, eligible applicants may receive compensation for their content losses or essential cleanup. The remainder of the categories, if eligible, may receive compensation for their content losses, cleanup, structural losses, and essential access. The process for disaster financial assistance can be broken down into a few steps. So once applications have been received, our program area reviews them for completeness and basic eligibility. Once eligibility has been established and the applicant appears eligible, the file is assigned to our field evaluation team. The field evaluators will contact our applicants and may set up a site visit. Some applicants may receive multiple site visits or site visits from another professional, like a geotech, if that's required. Once those professionals have completed those assessments, they return them back to the program office and make a recommendation for eligible costs. The DFA program assesses the report, and if applicable, issues a payment. You've heard from a lot of other folks tonight that this atmospheric river event was unprecedented. It is the largest event that we have ever authorized for disaster financial assistance in BC. And recognizing that it was unprecedented, we've taken a number of steps. So we've increased our staff both in the office and in the field, and we continue to do so in response to the volume of applications we've received. We're reviewing our established practices for ways to expedite the process, and we continue to work through them as quickly as possible with our staff working evenings and weekends. The best way to reach the Disaster Financial Assistance Program is one of three ways. So you can call us toll-free, 1-888-257-4777. You can also email us at DFA, as in Disaster Financial Assistance, at gov.bc.ca. Or you can go to any search engine and type DFA space BC, and we're the first link that comes up. Thanks so much, and Trevor and I are available for any questions.
Any questions for our two presenters from Emergency Management BC? No? And maybe Trevor, you can share with us what EMBC is. We often hear that during an emergency, Emergency Management BC. And local governments will call on Emergency Management BC to provide funding to help respond to different events. Can you, in a nutshell, tell us what EMBC does?
Sure.
We'll ask you to step up to the mic if you don't mind, please. Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. It sounds like you're asking me to skip ahead to that next section, though. Is that what you're asking?
Not necessarily. No, I just was thinking in general terms for people if they're wondering what EMBC is.
Sure. So Emergency Management BC is essentially your community's sort of gateway to other provincial services. So during an emergency, your first point of contact is your local government, who, you know, the local government act has a responsibility to protect its constituents. But they can't be expected to go it alone, of course. So the province has a lot of, I guess, expertise to bring to bear and a lot of different ministries. So the local government, if you contacted the local government in a bad emergency, they would contact Emergency Management BC. You know, we would work with them to understand what their needs are, and we would call in other experts, Ministry of Forest, RIC's group, hydrologists, Ministry of Transportation, Ministry of Environment, and determine sort of what's needed to help local government solve that, that problem. So that's typically what we would do.
Prelude to your next presentation later on, okay? Thank you very much, Trevor, and thank you as well. We do appreciate you both coming up, Rochelle Carey and Trevor Bohay. Now, we are going to invite up to the podium, to our microphone, we have Trevor Keir. So Trevor was hired by the Regional District of Okanagan and Similkamene. Oh, we have a question. Oh, a question online. All right, we have a question online. Hello, online. We're going to get your question here in just a second. Has the federal government provided any funding to the Regional District or Princeton? I believe the federal government has been involved. I'm not sure that I'm the person to answer that. Who would like to jump in on that? Federal funding, getting some no's, I think, not to date, not that we know of. So we're going to have to go with a no for that question. And the mayor of Princeton, also the vice chair of the Regional District of Okanagan and Similkamene, Mr. Spencer Coyne, that's not true. Good, I'm glad you're going to clarify that for us because I'm not the one to answer that question. Thank you.
Yeah, so that's not true. We've received some funding. We've received Emergency, was it EAF? Emergency Assistant Financial Assist, EFA, Emergency Financial Assistance. That's the stuff that you receive in the middle. You get those approvals at the beginning. So when we're actually in the middle of the flood and we need to repair something that's in the emergency, we have to send a request off, and then EMBC will approve it or not. So those things have been approved. DFA has not been approved yet, but that's why we're meeting tomorrow.
Is that for the RDOs or municipality or both?
That's for the municipality, and I don't know.
Provincial.
Provincial, and federal is the DFA, but we haven't received that yet.
All right. Go ahead, sir.
I believe the federal government funded 50% of that money from the Red Cross.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, we're, we seem to be guessing, so I'll leave it there for a moment and let you know that tomorrow, our goal is tomorrow, or the next day, as quickly as we can turn that around. We'll get out an information release that answers some of these questions. So I'll ask my colleague, Mark, if he can maybe make a note of that. We need to clarify exactly how the federal government has been involved. It's a fast-moving situation when flooding happens, and certainly when the request goes out, everyone's asked for money, and where it comes from, it's hard to track sometimes. So we'll leave it at that, I think, for now. All right, I think we're going to move on. And so Trevor Keir, as I mentioned, Trevor is the Recovery Manager for the Regional District of Okanagan and Similkamene. He's been working and probably spoken with many of you in person to try and answer some of your local questions and to try and help this recovery process as best he can. And he is here now, and he put this event together tonight to make sure that we can continue the dialogue. So I'll ask you to step up to that mic if you don't mind. Again, it's Trevor Keir.
Thank you, Eric, and good evening, everyone that's here in person and online. I guess one of the first things I would say is recovery really is a team effort. And it wasn't just me that put it on, but thank you. I did, I did put a lot of work into this because, you know, we, but we all wanted to come up and show up with the absolute best information we can give you right now. And again, for the people online as well, so that we know that you're facing another Freshet. And, you know, that's going to be, it was traumatic for you before, and you're, you're wondering what's going to come next. And what is the longer-term picture? Like, what does it look like going forward? And so, again, we appreciate all of the ministry representatives that have come out this evening, organizational representatives, to get this information for you. And I am a conduit, as has been spoken by Eric and Trevor, in terms of helping you to get the information you're looking for, to get answers that you're seeking. And so please reach out to me after this event. As Eric said, I have spoken with a number of residents. I came on at the end of January, and as Trevor's, Trevor Bohay spoke to, the Regional District reached out to EMBC for some additional supports to assist in the recovery because there's just so much work that goes on. Recovery can really start right after the event happens. You're in a response phase, but there's also a recovery phase that happens. And so the RDOs, Emergency Management Team, and other RDOs staff were already in kind of a recovery as they were responding. And the work becomes like overwhelming if you don't get additional resources. So one of, one of the things we do, and then we transition from, from response into recovery, so I've been very involved with that, and carrying on the work that the Emergency Management Department started. There are four pillars of recovery. Generally, that's how it's looked at. There's people, so assisting people with their needs and recovery. Then there's infrastructure recovery, environmental recovery, and economic recovery. And, and the balance of what that looks like is dependent on really what happens in any given region or community. So if you look at what happened in the town of Princeton and you compare that with what happened in Area H, there was some similarities, many similarities, but also many differences. There are economic impacts in the town and the downtown core with the business owners there. You know, quite a bit different than Area H residents, but still, a number of businesses impacted here as well. And so my focus is, becomes like, what am I hearing from the most as a recovery manager? And then facilitating those, but working with all areas. So in the economic development, for instance, I can comment that the BC Economic Development Association is a longstanding organization that has been for the last number of years now, coming in when there are disaster, environmental disaster events. And they will come in and do an impact assessment, an economic, economic impact assessment for a community or for a region. So they're working very closely with the town of Princeton. They've been doing surveys of businesses. They've also extended that into Area H businesses. And, and so we gather that information up, and then they go back to government and say, look, here's the impact on the business community. And that becomes a bit of an advocacy for, for supports, to let the government know what is really happening, what does this look like on the ground for business owners, and then, and then to say to the government, this is how you can be supported. And it doesn't, it's just not like retail businesses. It's, you know, the full gamut of businesses, including farmers and ranchers, like agricultural operators. Another big piece of what I'm doing on the people's side is really basically helping people, you know, to find the channels, the supports that, to move you forward and with the various needs you have. And I've had numerous conversations about properties and structures that have been affected, you know, removal of waste materials, flood debris, personal support as it relates to disaster financial assistance applications, Red Cross, many Red Cross communications. We have a weekly meeting with the town of Princeton. We're working very closely with the recovery manager and the recovery team there. And we, on those weekly calls, we have many of the representatives from the provincial ministries here. And it's our opportunity weekly to report, here's what's happening, here's where we're at, here's what our needs are. And then we ask for that assistance, or we advocate for that assistance. So that's just to give you some insight of the, of the processes that are going on. And again, we've had a lot of back and forth with the Red Cross, and we certainly appreciate their efforts. It's not all smooth. It's not always perfect. And there could be a number of reasons for that, but we try to, try to get it right and get better as well as we go along. So I continue to work very closely, again, in that recovery manager role with all of the provincial ministries that you've heard from this evening. That's a key part of my role is passing those needs off, but also looking not only from an individual perspective, but also from the community perspective. So what is, what is the community of Colmont and Tulamin looking at going forward? What is the community's needs? And similarly, I'm working with the resident group in Eastgate that are assessing their overall flood impacts and how they might want to address mitigation going forward. So one of the things we've done was worked with an application for the United Way. They have a flood recovery grant that we applied for on behalf of Tulamin and United Way, and working very closely with Jody Woodford, the Tulamin and District Fire Department Chief. And we were successful with that application. And so now we have monies that have allowed for the purchase of a sand conveyor system that will marry up to the sand apparatus, dispensing apparatus that's already here. So that's going to make sandbagging a whole lot easier for residents of Colmont and Princeton. And that's, you know, for a lot of the volunteers and for the first responders, the fire department volunteers that are doing that work. There's also some money in there for rehabilitation of the community's trails and parks. So that's, that, once we get through Freshet here and things warm up some more, that'll be something that starts to happen. And then finally, there's also some dollars in there for some improvements to the Tulamin and District Fire Hall. So where there was sheltering in place, taking place before, but they didn't have a stove, and there wasn't a shower and things like that, we've been able to access dollars for that to happen. So we're really appreciative to the United Way. But again, those kind of initiatives, you need someone to be able to work on that kind of stuff because everyone is so busy in response and just doing their regular jobs. And so that's my role to try to make that happen. Similarly, we've been talking about the uncertainties related to Freshet and the new realities that exist now in the waterways and the river courses on the land as a result of this like massive, you know, flood experience that we've had. And we know that things have changed drastically out there, and, but we don't know, what does that mean? What are the potential impacts going forward? Is flooding, if you could call it, ever typical in Tulamin area from the river Otter Lake? Is it going to be the same going forward? Is that going to look different? So, you know, we were advocating for some kind of assessment, looking forward to see what that might look like. And we had receptive ears and Trevor Bohay and Rick and others that agreed that if we could find some resources to do some kind of assessment, that we should do that. And so we've made application in a, in a couple of different areas. And we were fortunate through, largely through a lot of work that Trevor Bohay did, to receive funding at the end of March so that we can do a further risk assessment and flood mitigation. We're going to revisit a major study that was done in just the last couple of years, but we're going to see how we can update that and assess that new reality, and then perhaps look at some other flood planning and possibly mitigation things. We're just working out those things right now. But just want you to know that we're, we're working on that, we're looking at that. And again, we're advocating for that for the communities up here. And also a thank you in that point to the Canadian Red Cross because we didn't know if there was going to be any provincial dollars available for that. And so also made an application through Pat Quealy, the vice president, who's here this evening. And the Red Cross had come through for funding for us as well if we weren't able to access that from the provincial government. So thank you. Thank you for that. So I just want to mention that your fire chief here is, I'm, I'm in conversation with her just about every day, sometimes a couple of times a day, and, sorry. It's funny how it affects the people that were never involved with the, with the event, but... I'm a contractor. So I'm not regular RDOs staff, and... I haven't been around for years. I did wildfire recovery for the city of Williams Lake in 2017, 2018. So I have experience in, in recovery and in working with people that have been affected and organizations and community stuff. But I think part of my motion is that for those of you that, I think a lot of you know, but for those of you don't know, Jody's been going above and beyond for this community and Colmont. She is part of the recovery team, even if it's not official. And a lot of the things that are happening here and the efforts that are happening, you know, she is like a huge advocate. And there's a side of that, that's a first responder side, the people that actually had to help people get out of their buildings and, and evacuate and all that. And then there's some that just has a lot of, excuse me, a lot of heart and soul and skin in the game. And, and she really is like giving her best for this community. So anyway, sorry about that. So going forward, I will continue to work as well as I can and be an advocate for people here. And the people that are online that are not able to be here this evening. And we'll continue to work closely with our provincial representatives. And so that we, we're working as a team. And hopefully we, 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 we get the best out of this recovery efforts that we can. And on that note, I'll say that I've worked very closely with Maureen Parsley, who's the recovery manager for the town of Princeton. She's been working really hard for the town of Princeton residents. And she's also the Emergency Support Services Director as well for the town of Princeton. And unfortunately, she could be with here this, with us this evening. I believe she's probably tuned in. But also, one of the things that the town of Princeton done, and they've done a lot of good things for, for the residents outside of the town of Princeton, they have a, there's a recovery fund and they've been, people outside of Princeton have been able to access that. They waived tipping fees for a number of months. And so people here were able to benefit from that as well. But they've also put a town of Princeton Resiliency Center in place. And through there, we've had the Red Cross, we've had DFA associated there. There's Joe Wong, an amazing contractor who's working with residents and really helping them to navigate the rebuild process for their homes or their permitting or whatever they need. And, and so Joe's a fantastic resource and he works outside of the Princeton resource area as well. And but I'm going to let, I'm actually speaking now. We have this evening with us the Princeton Resiliency Center Manager, Kaylee Schofield. And she can come up and carry on from where I'm at right now. So thank you very much. Oh, sir, yes. Yeah, so we received $25,000. Yeah. And we made an application for an amount of about $50,000 for various initiatives or actions. And we were funded for half of that.
Now, that looks like it's going back into parks and trails, as you mentioned, when people's homes are still at stake of flooding.
Sure. And that's a, that's a good question. So if you look at the funding that's available for homes, you have your, like, first of all, people have insurance. If they were able to carry insurance, get insurance. And then you have the disaster financial assistance. And then you have Canadian Red Cross supports and Pat Quealy will be speaking to that next. So he can speak to the funding that's available, not only for personal financial, but then for home rebuilds. And then after that, this funding that the United Way makes available is funds that they've fundraised or people donated, but it's for these types of activities. It's not for people's homes. So if we were applying for a fund that was for people's homes, we wouldn't do that. But they're making this funding available for, and even, even at that, we were a little outside of probably what their normal type of funding application is. We had some initiatives in mind, working with Jody, working within the RDOS team that we thought, if we could get these funded, it would be great. So let's get it out there. Let's ask the questions and see if we're successful. And we, we got half of that funded, which we feel pretty good about. So.
So does the RDOS receive funding from the government as municipalities do? Or is, how does that work?
So I'm not, I'm not the subject matter expert to speak on that. I'll offer that up to someone else from the RDOS. Mark? Thank you.
Mark Woods is the manager of Community Services and they deal with parks, trails, facilities, and a number of different elements that the RDOS is involved in. And Mark, we did have that question earlier that I mentioned, maybe you can tackle that one as well. But first of all, on the funding issue for the RDOS and recovery.
Yeah, short answer for local governments, municipalities and regional districts, we have access to the same funds. So the, the funds that Trevor just described are the typical funds that we tap into. Vice Chair/Mayor Coin spoke briefly about expense authorization funding, which is what it's referred to as. When we activate an emergency operations center, just like the town of Princeton, we access those funds through EMBC, Trevor and his team. That, that allows us to, to do work within the disaster, whatever it might be, fixing homes. No, that's not something we typically delve into. You know, it would go into anything from, you know, reconnaissance flights for a helicopter to food for emergency responders. Really, the whole gamut of what we might have to tackle. You know, we know there was a huge response up here in this community. If a fire chief or any of the other emergency responders needed assistance in the form of food or extra resources, we would flow it through that channel, even right up to the military getting involved. And we see that happen from time to time. Those are typically requests where we say, we're overwhelmed locally. We're going to make that request up to the province. Trevor and others in the, in that team start to tap into the federal level resources. So EAFs, those are what we call our expense authorization forms. And that's our very typical process to get money through the government to use it locally.
And we had a question, Mark, that came in online, and I know we will have to follow up on this, but the question was, will the RDOS pay for water testing for homeowners who are unable to return until now, until winter, or they've come up after winter? What can you say about that?
Yeah, good, good one. So there's a good example of an EAF where we would have worked with the province through the Interior Health Authority for an opportunity to do that. I, I'm not certain if that's still active. I'd have to follow up on that. But certainly when the disaster was in taking place, that was one of the processes we put in, unless you have new information, Trevor.
So just, just to add to that, I believe it was January 31st, when the funding for well water testing ended. But if you have Canadian Red Cross, if you enrolled in Canadian Red Cross or sought them out, and that doesn't mean that you can't if you haven't already. This is something that I've raised because we've heard from a number of people inquiring about well water testing and is there a possibility of getting those costs covered? So we've raised that with the Canadian Red Cross and they're, they've moved from like an overall, the first sort of emergency response operating procedure, and again, Pat can speak to this, into personalized recovery supports. So if you're an individual and you've got, you know, months of well water testing ahead of you or something like that, that is something that you can discuss with the Red Cross, like it's on an individual basis.
Okay, thank you very much, Trevor, and thank you, Mark Woods. And we have Kaylee standing by as well, Schofield, and she's going to talk a bit about the Resiliency Center, and then we'll move on to our next speakers.
Hello. As Trevor mentioned, my name is Kaylee Schofield and I am the manager for the town of Princeton's Resiliency Center, but also work closely with the recovery team for the town of Princeton. We are currently opened up the Resiliency Center at the beginning of February, I believe it was. 137 Taptan Avenue, or as most of you probably know, at the Beaufort Building. We currently host there the Canadian Red Cross. Joe Wong is also in the building. He helps all things home. He also works closely with the Mennonite group, as well as Christian Aid Relief when they are in town. We also have interior mental health drop-in if anybody wants to access those supports every Thursday from 10:00 AM till 12:00. And we are currently in the process of bringing in disaster psychosocial two days a week, but we will be advertising that once we get things a little bit more firm. I myself work closely with a lot of people in this room on our recovery calls. And we are currently working with the Foundry in Pentikin just to kind of start activating a bit more community engagement within the town, obviously within RDOS as well. Just to try to get things a little bit back more normal and give you guys, our, the communities, some more excitement from coming off of the flood. The doors are always open Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 3:30. We have a community navigator in there, Monday to, Monday, Tuesday and Thursday. And you can also reach out to myself, email or phone, and we can help you guys get whatever you may need. We have active resource lists that we do keep current. So we have phone numbers, emails, contacts for all the services located in, or that are here in this building, as well as more services locally, provincially, federal, you name it. We have active resource list in the building that we can also send digital as well. So if you guys need anything, I am here tonight, or you can find me at the Resiliency Center.
Kaylee, thank you very much. Kaylee Schofield, she is with the Princeton Flood Recovery and Resiliency Center. And our next guest speaker is Pat Quealy. He is the Vice President for British Columbia and Yukon with the Canadian Red Cross. He is here with an update on supports and other elements that you're involved in. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for inviting us, particularly Vice Chair, Mayor Coin, Trevor, I know Maureen's not here, Kaylee, incredible host to us in Princeton. My job in the Red Cross is I'm responsible for everything that we do in British Columbia and Yukon. So it's a great privilege of mine to be able to be here today with you and chat about some of the work that's underway, but most importantly, what we can look forward to in terms of working within that team that everybody's been talking about today. And then some of the supports that are available. But the most important person in the room from the Red Cross is this gentleman. And, and this gentleman is James Zalinyak, right, James? Sorry, I always butcher that. So James, take your mask off for a second, James, so people know what you look like. James works as the supervisor for case management at the Resilience Center in Princeton. And just to highlight a bit about James, James has worked as a case management supervisor in 2017 fires, 2018 fires and floods. And now focused and dedicated to this role here to supporting RDOS and the community of Princeton specifically. So James is the subject matter expert when it comes to case management. I'm going to talk a little bit about it. There are some slides. There's been a lot of slides tonight and I don't want to drone on, but there's a couple of key ones that we'll touch on. So please forgive me if, if, if we dwell there for a bit. But I, first off, there's really two main messages I have for you tonight. To people who have been impacted by this event, by the atmospheric river. First off, our hearts are with you and we are committed as a Red Cross and I'm in this team of everyone who's been here tonight to be with you as long as you need us. And so any notion of us being here for a short time, supports only being available for a short time, I want to dispel that notion and commit to the fact that we'll be here in whatever form makes sense. And right now, the best form is a physical presence, being here and being able to be accessed. And, and James is leading that. The other key main message I'd like to pass on tonight is to please, if you've been impacted in any way by this event, if you haven't done so already, please connect with us, register and sign up for case management. And I'll talk about what case management is a little bit in a second. But this is a conduit. You decide what supports you would like to explore. You decide how we might help, but it's meant to be there for you. Just to maybe go over a few fine points, so I don't miss any details. If we could please flash up the slide, sir? Don't, no problem. I could do it without slides. So maybe just a bit about where we've been. And so what Red Cross did initially in, in collaboration with communities was to first focus on mass financial assistance. And this was done in collaboration as well with our colleagues from Emergency Management BC. Just to summarize, some of you may have experienced this. You saw initially some financial assistance, great, thank you, that saw direct financial assistance and disbursement of about 19 million. I think we're going on about $20 million of direct financial aid to households. I think Trevor talked about the pillars. The people pillar is where we focus. And so that was our initial focus. We're now in this point of transition, I would say, is the right way to frame it, where we're looking more at the recovery and longer-term side. And so what's, what does that mean for us? It's looking at things as well like housing repair and reconstruction. And I'll cover a number of those supports and how they might be focused and how they might help fill some gaps where other programs are either completing or insurance, for example, doesn't meet all of your needs. Next slide, please. So just some points here, and obviously our slides are available. We're in the, the area now where we're trying to tailor supports to individual household needs. So it's not just giving specific amounts for financial assistance. It's really being able to focus based on what you tell us are your focus areas and what are your unmet needs. We clearly don't want to duplicate programs such as DFA or insurance. So this is where the case management comes in handy. Our folks can help navigate, folks like James, you know, the different programs and, and give some guidance there. But most importantly, give more personalized services the intention. So things will look different for everyone, I think is important to note. But again, anyone who's been impacted by the atmospheric river event is, from our view, eligible for these supports. And there is no time limitation in terms of when you might want to reach out to us. So if you decide a couple of months from now you need support, that's still accessible to you and, and we look forward to seeing what we can do to help. Next slide, please. So really simply breaking it down into the three elements of what's available, the personalized recovery supports, interim housing and basic needs, which is what a lot of folks are receiving right now, and housing repair and reconstruction. Across BC from this event, we have about 1,000 households right now that are receiving supports for recovery. And to me, that's telling because we know we dispersed to over 7,500 households during the initial event and, and response. So that says that there may be a delta. There may be people who are not aware of this service, may need it, and this is why we're here tonight, is to, to really just make that awareness and see what we can do to, to bridge any gaps. Next slide, please. Okay, so take one point. Maybe just to cover a little bit more concretely, what are some of the supports available? Assistance to navigating the recovery process, we heard a number of folks do that. We're certainly doing that at the Resilience Center and available through online or phone connections as well. Helping households prioritize their needs. Folks like James have been through a number of different events and have seen different iterations and can give some help as, as folks see fit to receive it on different processes and different ways of getting supports from different programs. This can be everything from community connections like Kaylee mentioned, linkages to folks like Giles in terms of disaster, disaster psychosocial supports, referrals to other agencies. We collaborate with folks like Mennonite Disaster Services and other agencies that are doing great work as well. And then also what really I think is, is a really concrete, tangible piece is the financial assistance. And so financial assistance now, taking a bit more of a focus on those housing supports, housing repair and reconstruction. And I want to take a minute just to describe some of the housing repair and reconstruction elements that are eligible and are considered with the Red Cross program that may not be eligible in, in other program areas. So for example, cleanup of home and property, repair or rebuilding of home where your insurance or DFA isn't covering it, moving to different location as a result of this event, and other more specific things such as household mold remediation, which may not be available otherwise. So that's an example, but again, James and his team can walk through this in a lot more detail. So I heard, you know, Trevor, you mentioned things like water testing and such. I don't have that answer for you. I don't, I don't know that we are able to do that right now, but it's certainly something we can look into. And if there's a way, we'll find a way. That said too, you know, I mentioned we focus on the human side. If there are ways that we can support community, Trevor mentioned one that we were trying to help with RDOS, if, if they needed the additional support for the, the upstream assessment. We'll, we'll look at whatever comes forward to us and see how we can, can make that work. So we can be fairly agile and we're not really as constrained perhaps in terms of how we can provide those supports. So, and I think most importantly, right at this point, to say, we, we recognize too, that we can always do better. So, you know, if there's feedback you want to give us in terms of the supports you've received and there are better ways to interact and better ways to provide these services, we're all ears and humbly accept that, that, that feedback. That to say, our case managers will work with folks who have any challenges in terms of access and such. We're, we're happy to, to, to visit and to continue meetings like this. And really just encourage folks to take the time and have a chat with us and, and see what we might do to help. Now, last slide, please. So this is the most important slide, goes back to my second most important message. This is how you get in contact with us. You choose what's the best way. If folks want to go online, there's the, the email address, the phone line, booking appointment, and what's really results is getting a connection with a case manager. The, the Resilience Center is an amazing resource and we're grateful to be part of that team. And that's and that's a good place for folks to connect directly as well. I'll leave it at that, and James, is there anything you wanted to add, just for detail?
Just as we're moving forward with recovery, it's a journey. We are going to be here for the long term with, as we move forward in the repair and rebuild. So it is important to have those connections with the case managers because we're able to help break down some of those challenges, maybe help bring some organization and help you prioritize how to be moving forward. The case managers have that skill and the ability to be working alongside you to move at the pace that you want to be moving at. It's a lot that's going to be, a lot has been happening, and a lot's going to be happening, and it's going to be a long, it's going to be a long process. And with case management, that's here to help you, that's here to be that support with you through that journey. So it is important, because as funding is, as funding is becoming available, and we find out gaps and areas of need within your recovery planning, we're able to see what we have accessible and work with you to help move that forward.
Thanks, James. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you both, James and Pat. Any quick questions for our two guests from the Canadian Red Cross before we move on to our next section, which is, Trevor Bohay wanted to ask a question. Eric, Trevor, I'm going to come over with the microphone. Trevor is our next guest speaker from EMBC, and he's going to talk a bit about the Frichet outlook in just a moment, but you had a question for the Red Cross.
Thanks, Eric. A little unorthodox, I guess, for a presenter to ask another presenter a question, but, you know, something's been kind of coming up in our community, our conversations with our communities, and it's something that I'm concerned about personally, and that's around mold propagation. I think, you know, a lot of people haven't been able to get into their homes for quite some time, and, you know, the rapid damage assessments, of course, happen very early on, and then what's happened is, you know, mold started to propagate, and it can be a health concern. And I'm just really grateful because, you know, the Canadian Red Cross has offered to step up, you know, through its programs to assess, to help people, you know, with the issues of mold propagation. So I don't know if you want to talk just a little bit about that at all?
Other than to say that that's something we're happy to look at, if those are individual needs for funding to deal with that, certainly we're not the experts in the remediation of the mold propagation, but we recognize that that is a potential gap, right? And so as the experts are coming forward to support individual households, that is an item that we are willing to fund as it's a need with individuals. So happy to contribute that way.
Okay, we're going to ask Trevor Keer to speak to that in just a moment, but Mayor and Vice Chair of the RDOS, Spencer Coin, has a point or a question.
Just Spencer right now. What about recreational property owners? Do you assist them?
Our focus is on primary residences. I won't say no, because that's, you know, there's room to always explore. I would say, let's get connected with case managers for specific instances, but our focus is on primary residences. So that's really where we're driving at right now.
Okay, all right, thank you. And Trevor Keer, the Recovery Manager for the Regional District. Trevor, you can step up to the podium, and I know that mold has been a real issue for a lot of people, and it's important that people address that issue as quickly as they can, if they haven't already.
That's great, Eric. That's just what I wanted to say, that we are aware of, you know, at least two or three residents that have moved back into their home, and their home is probably not a healthy situation for them to be. But for whatever their personal circumstances, that's a choice that they've made. And so we've been having conversations with the Red Cross and Joe Wong in Princeton, and Mennonite Disaster Services, Christian Aid Ministries, et cetera, is that can we find a way to get in there and do proper mold mitigation measures and find a home for those individuals or a place for them to be while that work is going on? They really have to come forward and request that or ask for that, but our job is to get the word out to them and let them know, and really, you know, it's some additional short-term pain for a whole lot of long-term gain for your health. So if you know of anybody that's in those circumstances, you know, please do them a favor and maybe suggest, let them know at least that we're trying to be there for them, come up with a solution that could work to help make their home a healthier environment. Thank you.
Okay, Danny Francisco, did you, you said we have a question here, I'm going to go take a look at this, just one second here. And question online. A lot of people are not full-time homeowners, they're not eligible for Red Cross funding, but feel they should be eligible for free water testing to make sure people actually do this. We did talk about that a little bit earlier on, and that was, there was a question, I believe, whether that funding was available, I think.
Yeah, I think that the best way to answer that, and sorry, Trevor's got his hand up. I think the best way for us to answer that is, this is something we should explore further with RDOS and perhaps Princeton directly. If there's a gap, and if there's a way to look at how we can help, they're happy to explore it, but the detail of which I, you know, I leave to the.
Well, that's something we can put out tomorrow when we, or as soon as we get this information release out, that we'll follow up on what happened here tonight.
I can speak to, it's Trevor here again, that these are the kind of things that come up, that James was just saying about, like emerging needs that show up. And then, again, we're a conduit, I'm a conduit to get that information to the Red Cross. So my understanding is that it's on a case-by-case basis, so the Red Cross will look at whatever the needs are, and then the residents, homeowners or individuals' abilities to look after that needs themselves, or whether they need some of the supports. And my, like, preliminary conversation with your team has been that, you know, they would look at that and try to address that if they could, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And my point is as well, if there's a more comprehensive need, happy to explore that with the appropriate authorities and level of government.
Okay, with that, I think we'll, you two might as well take a seat, we'll get on to some Frichet. But before Trevor goes, I think this might be a good one for you to address, Trevor, I'll get you to come up to the podium. We had a couple of questions there about people whose homes are not their primary residences. So there's two questions there about that, and whether, so if it's a recreational property, where they fit in when it comes to support services, whether it's from the Red Cross or DFA? Can you clarify that? And is it, again, it's something we'll follow up with on tomorrow as well, when we put out our information release.
Yeah, so, and this is something that, you know, I would ask our DFA representative to speak to as well, but the primary focus and concern of the province is primary residence of homeowners, and that also then is reflected in the Canadian Red Cross's primary focus as well as to support those primary residences. You know, I learned something this evening, that the residential, or sorry, recreational property owners could approach the Red Cross and have some discussions and see where those might land, so that's good news. It is a difficult thing for people that have recreational properties or second homes or whatever, that those supports aren't there what they feel like they should or wish they would, but at least, I mean, obviously, you know, the primary residents are the key. Yet I'm speaking outside of, I should probably let.
Rochelle is with Disaster Financial Assistance, can you provide a quick point of clarification?
Yeah, absolutely. So Disaster Financial Assistance is available for primary residences only. It is unable to fund secondary homes or seasonal dwellings.
Okay, with that, we will move on. We want to keep this meeting going so that we can wrap it up at nine o'clock. We appreciate all of those of you who are joining us online and here in person. And just to reset again, my name is Eric Thompson, I'm an Information Officer with the Emergency Operations Centre when it's active, which it is not right now, and we hope it not to be for a while. I'm also a Communications Coordinator with the Regional District of Okanagan and Summilkamine. And I mentioned the information release, the plan is to take all of the information we've gathered here tonight, both some of the questions that we were not able to answer and some of the key points that came out, and put that out in an information release that we'll get out as soon as we can through the Regional District of Okanagan and Summilkamine. Trevor Bohay, there he is, I thought you had left. Trevor Bohay is with Emergency Management BC. We're looking ahead now to Frichet, and a few thoughts on that from Trevor. Thank you, Trevor.
Sure, I'll try not to get too deep into what Rick might be saying, but yeah, Emergency Management BC, again, works with your local government to help them prepare for emergencies and disasters, and we do regular Frichet planning. And so, you know, tomorrow is morning is our second meeting between, you know, the communities, the various First Nations and local government agencies, and what we do is we bring together other sources of information. So for example, we'll have a presentation from the BC River Forecast Centre, from Environment Canada, to help provide a Frichet outlook. Rick's group will present, and that will give the, what we call a situational awareness to the local governments. And, you know, as the situation evolves, then we set up a provincial, regional Emergency Operations Centre, typically in CAM loops, that we would staff usually for about 12 hours a day during an emergency. And the local governments would staff up their own Emergency Operations Centres, and we'd work together with them to understand what their needs are and bring together subject matter experts that might help them assess, you know, with respect to Frichet, you know, what's coming down the pipe, and what we can do to mitigate that flooding. And that would typically involve things like approving sandbags, HESCO baskets, tiger dams, that sort of thing. We also do allow for temporary emergency riprapping to happen, as well as temporary dikes to be raised. It is important that we remove those temporary dikes after the flood risk is over. And the reason for that is that they're built very hastily, very quickly, they're not compacted, they're built with fairly poor material, just whatever's at hand, right? And so we don't want those to stay and have people to have a false sense of security afterwards, you know, if we let them sit for years and years and years, frankly, like we did with the dikes that were built in 1972, they've become orphan dikes, nobody understands if they're fit for purpose any longer, and, you know, people, you know, end up living behind them and have this sort of a false sense of security. So, you know, it is important that we remove these temporary structures as soon as we're done using them. Any questions on that?
Any questions for Trevor Bohay? Trevor, I noticed on the drive up here, there were some HESCO baskets, Gabian baskets, as they're also known, along the Summilkamine River, right by the bridge in Princeton, bridge across the way. Any, I don't know, not to put you on the spot, but they're still there. Any idea what will happen with those types of baskets?
Yeah, so there's sometimes when we do allow some of our temporary measures to sort of stay, so if they were put up for the Atmospheric River, and then the two floods that we had subsequent that went into December, knowing that Frichet's coming and the area might be ripe for another flood, we might allow some of that stuff to stay until the following Frichet, because it doesn't make sense to sort of yank it out and then take it right back. But we try not to let these things persist for too long, it's better, you know, to, I guess, you know, fund studies like we have and see if the local government is keen to move forward with anything that's more permanent, and help them with that. But of course, that's very tricky in a regional district because of the way the government funding model is typically, you know, if you wanted to have dikes, you know, along dikes, along certain areas, you know, you'd have to ask the local government, the Regional District, to raise a service area for you and pay for that, which is difficult for people in a regional district. You can put private dikes on your own property, but they can only protect one individual property.
Okay. Danny, any questions online that we need to know about? And we have a question over here. Stand by there, sir, I'm going to give you the microphone here, just so our folks online can hear you. Go ahead, please.
The Trans-Canada Trail runs through our community, Tulamene, Colmont, et cetera, and in some areas, it did provide diking for the homes. And they did, so they no longer do provide that diking with the Trans-Canada Trail being gone. So is there any talk about redoing the Trans-Canada Trail?
Yeah, I've talked with my colleagues at rec sites and trails, so there was many millions of dollars of damage, you know, to, I'm just going to assume that the TC Trail makes up part of the KVR, because I'm not familiar with all the trail systems, so I'm, I guess, hopefully not incorrectly assuming that they overlap, Spencer's nodding, good. Yeah, so, I mean, they're really trying to understand, they've taken out a couple of bridges, you know, that were sort of half in and half out of the stream, and all I can say is, you know, they're looking at whether they'll be able to find the funds to repair that many millions of dollars that would take to redo those trails, but nothing guaranteed right now.
Okay, all right, Trevor, thank you so much. Oh, got a question back here. Again, Trevor Bohay is with Emergency Management BC, go ahead, please.
Okay, so I realize the biggest importance right now is houses, homes, people, but I'm talking about the trail too, and it did provide a barrier, a sort of protection, but it's also a huge thing going forward after things have settled, that provides huge community. And I'm not talking as the ATV dealer.
I have a motorcycle, I like riding on it, so.
I am talking as a community member, president of the ATV club, whatever you want to say. But it is a huge thing that has been used in the community, and even if we could work on fixing between Myra Brewer's property and White Sands, that would be huge and would do a lot for the community going down the road, so.
Yeah, I understand, and I think, like as I alluded, I also have a dual-sport motorcycle and like to use the trails. What I would say, if you are the president of a club or a society like that, I would get in touch with rec sites and trails and just, and sort of talk to them about what some of your concerns and needs are, because, you know, they're trying to make a decision, and they're sort of looking at it at the 10,000-foot level, and as anyone in government, you know, will tell you, it's, you know, we don't always have all the little nuances, you know, that some people may have, and sometimes that might tip the scale, you know, when it comes to deciding whether to fund something or not, you know, that would go to as a decision note to a minister, and, you know, they need to understand every aspect of that importance, so.
Two in this area?
So I'll just jump in here. This is something that we've been talking to every level of government about, it's not just, not just EMBC, we've talked all the way to the federal government on needing some sort of response on this. Everybody right now is shaking their head and trying to figure out what to do because of the amount of money it's going to cost. Yeah, well, we've gotten past no, I think, we've gotten some, we're looking at it, which is hope. I won't say it's going to happen, but right now, but I think there is a, you know, but like, like you were saying, those letters and support from community groups would help us immensely moving forward. We have to make a case to the federal government, because I believe that's who we're going to have to lean on for this. But we're trying to make an economic argument for it as well, as, yeah, so we need, so we need those letters, we need those, those letters sent to Ottawa, we need them sent to Victoria, we need them sent to the municipality, to the regional district, so we all have the same messaging coming from the communities saying, we need this back. It's also a vital transportation link between Princeton and Colmont. Without it, we've only got one way to go, unless we're going to go all the way up to Aspen Grove. So we need that support from the communities, both at the regional district, the municipality, and the provincial and federal levels. So the more, the more voices, the better.
Thank you, thank you very much for your question. And Trevor, thank you very much, we're going to bring up our next guest speaker, but that's a really good point, is information coming from the community and then going to the regional district, the province, and even the federal government does go a long way to make the case for the importance of the KVR trail, of course, for quads and ATVs, but also for cyclists and even runners, believe it or not, some people do like to run on that. All right, we're going to bring Rick Pelashetik up, and he is going to talk a bit more about Frichet and the outlook. Rick is with the Ministry of Forests, formerly Flynnwood, which is a long name you used to have, now you've got the short name, so go ahead, Rick.
Thank you. And I do have slides, basically just continuing on, I think from my last slide. And yeah, I'm, Trevor asked me to provide, talk about upcoming Frichet, and so I'm not going to call it a forecast, because really, the way it works with Frichet is the forecast changes basically every week, you know. River Forecast Centre out of Victoria, they kind of lead the outlook as we, basically starting around now, mid-April through the spring, they provide us updates. They'll provide updates on a weekly or even a twice-weekly calls with the local government and with provincial agencies. No. Basically, it's, it's my, it's the same file, I think, as my first one. So yeah, River Forecast Centre will be providing us updates constantly, and really, spring flooding, it's a combination of a lot of things, right? It's a combination of the snow melt, of how early or how late the snow melts, is it combined with rain at the same time? I think that was the right package. I think that was the right package. And then just scroll down to like slide nine. Yeah, so, um, we'll, we'll get started on it. And, um, so like I said, River Forecast Center, they, they compile and release all the information on snow, snowpack, uh, flow gauge, flow gauges. They'll give the, um, the flood warnings and advisories, and that's on a public website. If you just, you know, search River Forecast Center, there's a lot of interesting information on there. And so if, if you're interested in keeping track of, of the discharges in the Tulamene River, that's the place to go. And there'll, there's real time data on there and graphs. And then there's a monthly snow bulletin that comes out, just came out a few days ago, and I'll talk a bit about, about some of the information that was in there. So these are, this is directly from the snow bulletin, just a reminder to, to everyone that it's, it's not just, you know, every, every region at this point in time is still at risk of flooding, and it's really going to depend on, um, you know, the temperature. If, if there's a, if we've got a long cold spell followed by rain and, and a, and a heat dome, you could still see flooding, right? And so, uh, as I said, as we go along throughout the spring, we'll have a better idea. But this is just, you know, just to give you a, a look at what information we have right at this point. Next slide. So as of April, you've got, there's four, uh, snow gauges really within the Tulamene, Sumalke mean watershed. There's Blackwall Peak in Manning Park, Lost Horse Mountain also south of the Sumalke mean, and then the two that are near here, Hamilton Hill, which I don't think is too far from here, and Mississauga Mountain up towards, I think, Aspen Grove. And so the numbers right now were, um, you know, Blackwall Peak is about 94% of normal, and it's, it's below where it was. I like to compare to last year, gives, it's a kind of a good, good comparison for me. Lost Horse Mountain, that one is higher, and that's, uh, you'll see in a, in a second that the Sumalke mean is being forecast to have higher than normal flows going into this year or this spring. The two lower elevation stations that feed in the Tulamene and Otter, Otter Lake watersheds, those are below normal right now. So, um, again, that's, I mean, that's favorable, but there's still a lot of different factors that will lead into what types of flows we, we get, and I'll talk about that in, in a Oh, uh, next slide. So this is one of the graphs that you'll see on the River Forecast Center, um, shows for Blackwall Peak. So the main thing here is that the, the blue line, which is this year's, uh, and you'll see that right around now is when that snowpack has really reached its peak for the year. And it's a little hard to see, but really we're, we're, Blackwall Peak is in between, it's slightly below than what the normal snow you'd have right now and a little bit above last year's. So, um, and that's at a high elevation, that's at 1,940 meters, so it obviously has not started melting yet. Probably it's been, for now, it's around 1,500 is kind of where you start, we're seeing snow starting to melt. Next slide. Here's, and I'm showing this one shovel nose, it's out, uh, along the Kokahala towards Merritt. It's an automatic, uh, gauge. And, um, you'll see there, it's had an early melt. So that blue line shows, um, and, and this is at a lower elevation, 1,460 meters. Uh, it, it's been low all year. I mean, it really dropped off, obviously, in early December when we had those high temperatures. And what we've seen is about, we had a fairly warm late March, and that's where you see a lot of that melt. And I think we'll see, when, when I show that the flows were getting to Tulamene, that's a, that's, uh, shows up there is that, um, at that elevation, we have been seeing an early snow melt this year. Next slide. So this is the, uh, this is a, um, a hydrograph for the Tulamene River. The, the red and the green, that's 50% of the time, the flows are going to be within that range. And the blue line there is, is this year so far. And there you'll see, we had an early, the, the river rose, um, early this year, and you can see, so about two or three weeks ago, it, it got to a fairly high rate, and, and that was due, we think, because of the, the warmer temperatures in late March. It has been dropping off slightly over the last couple of weeks, but in general, you're going to see it, that it's typically starting, it'll rise in late April, peak in about mid-May. And one thing I'll, I'll just point out there is, in, in November, you don't see a, a peak there. So, you know, most years, you don't see a big peak in November, but I didn't show that, like a one out of 10 year type, um, hydrograph, there are significant peaks in November. That, that, so that does happen occasionally. Nothing like last year. You know, if I turned on last year's flow, I mean, it, it would be literally above the ceiling. I mean, that was just such a huge flow. But that just gives you an indication of, um, uh, when we're expecting to see, see, uh, see the flows rise this spring. Like, next slide? Yeah, and then just, so just in general for the outlook, we, I got some information from Environment Canada. It is a La Niña winter, similar to last year, actually. So typically, you're going to have, um, a cool, uh, uh, spring and possibly a later snow melt. That's generally what will happen in a La Niña year. What their models are showing is that between now and early May, it's going to be cooler than normal. Between, but May to July, that period, the, uh, the models are showing a warmer than average temperatures. So, um, they, they can't really predict precipitation in the long term. What we'll typically get on these calls with, uh, River Forecast Center and the local governments is maybe a 10-day outlook on rain. What Environment Canada told me yesterday is really for the next seven days, we're not, not expecting a lot of precipitation. But like I said, we're, we'll be getting those, those, those updates at least once a week, starting later this month. And yeah, just in the last slide. So, um, I think the water engineering professional that ARDOS are hiring to, to do a study on, on the areas, he's provided some comments on, just on what are the effects of last year's flooding that could change what we see this spring? And, you know, I think a few people have said that, and, and some of the guests here, you know, things have changed, the river, it's a different river right now than it was a year ago. And so it's very unpredictable. Uh, it could be, you know, a typical fresh out, but it could have, it could impact, it could have impacts that you, we haven't seen in the past, right? There's areas where there's, that have been eroded, um, that have been destabilized, loss of vegetation, whatever, they're more susceptible to more erosion if, if they're on, say, an outside bend. There's areas where there's been deposition. So the river is just flowing differently than it was a year ago. And, and I think part of what we're going to be doing, and I, and I think probably ARDOS's, um, expert that they're hiring, is really monitoring how it reacts this fresh out. Is that, it, it's, it's pretty much impossible to predict that now. It's really watching what it does now, um, and that'll help with planning in the future. And, and one thing on, on Otter Lake is, um, we, we understand it, you know, it's, it's higher than it, it is, would be typically this time of year. And, and part of that is sedimentation, part of that is, it seems like there's been higher inflows this winter. So we're, we're going to be watching that as well. And I think the other thing that he put on here is that, uh, things could change more, you know, quicker than, than they might on a typical fresh out. So, you know, to really be careful out there when you're, if, if you're near, near the, near the river, and, um, watch for flood warnings from both River Forecast Center and, and from, uh, from the regional district and from Jody. I think that's, that's it for, for me. If there's any questions?
Rick, thank you very much. That last slide was quite important. And we know from the event in November and from previous floods that things change when you have flooding events in that slide, which provided some content from an engineer who's been monitoring this area quite closely. And I think the key, Rick, that you mentioned is to stay tuned to the local government, the regional district, uh, town of Princeton, but also to the River Forecast Center. There is a phone number, I believe, for the, uh, River Forecast Center, so people can dial in to get those regular updates, and we'll provide that when we put information out. Any questions for Rick before we get to our general Q and A and wrap things up for the evening? No, I think you, uh, you left us with some food for thought, Rick. Thank you so much for your time, we really appreciate it. Okay, so I'm going to make my way to the front here, and, um, so Danny Francisco is the Information Services Manager with the RDOS, and I wanted to give him a quick thank you for putting all this together, because, uh, kind of like the Wizard of Oz, you don't normally see him, he's back there doing a lot of great work to make this work for those of us here in the building to be able to see the slideshows, but also for those online. So we'll see if we have any questions from anyone online. And at this point, we have time for a general Q and A. Um, I'll go back to what I mentioned just a moment ago, that's really important, is the Emergency Operations Center has a website, it's emergency.rdos.bc.ca. It gets active when there is any kind of an emergency, but it's also good for preparedness, for resource, resource tips, but also if things start to happen, things start to change in this area, the RDOS website, rdos.bc.ca as well. So we'll keep an eye on things, and if there is information to share about flooding, potential flooding, that kind of thing, uh, we'll let you know as quickly as possible. Yes, Danny? Yep. Okay, so star three, if you are calling in through WebEx. And one other point I wanted to mention as well, that if, and, and I don't need to tell any of you this, who are either watching probably at home or, uh, here in the room, if you see anything that causes you concern, don't hesitate to report it, because often that's what happens, is it's that resident who sees something, whether it's a, a slippage related to a landslide or the water starts acting funny, if you report it as quickly as you can, uh, that can really make a big difference to get eyes on, uh, from an expert as quickly as possible. So we'll see if we have any other questions. And while we have a moment, I did want to, I'll, I'll do this now, um, to thank a few people, we, we have quite a few people who've come out tonight, uh, from provincial ministries, from the Red Cross and others, and we really wanted to thank you for taking that time, because it does make a big difference to provide the, the most accurate information we can get, and, uh, we certainly appreciate that. We'd also like to thank Chair Mark Pendegraft with the Regional District of Okanagan-Sumalke Mean, he's, um, not able to attend us here in person tonight, but, uh, we'll have details , uh, reported back to him, I think he might even be online, actually. Uh, the Vice Chair, Spencer Coyne, Mayor of Princeton as well, you've heard from him, and also all of you attendees who took time out of your night tonight to be with us. And we have a number of other people, she does not like to be singled out, so we won't single out Fire Chief Jody Woodford, and thank her for all the incredible work she's been doing and always answering, don't, don't single her out ever, always answering the phone, always being there to just be there. And, um, I think if we had an award to give her, we'd give her one right now, but we don't, so we'll have to wait. Uh, we'd also like to thank all of the volunteers who are with the Tulamene District Fire Department and all of the other fire departments in the area. If you've served on search and rescue or any of these volunteer groups, you know that people who put their lives at risk on a daily basis as a volunteer are very special people, and they deserve our thanks, especially when emergencies happen. Other first responders as well, RCMP, uh, paramedics. My neighbor is a paramedic, and I often jokingly refer to him as an ambulance driver. We know he does so much more than that, uh, the paramedics and B C ambulance, B C, uh, emergency health. Search and rescue, we mentioned them as well, Princeton Flood Relief Fund, United Way. Uh, we have a number of other groups who've been helping out, Mennonite Disaster Service, uh, Christian Aid Ministries, and even for people who are not necessarily, you know, it's non-denominational, they're helping people out in any way they can. Uh, United Way, Pencton Foundry, community volunteers at large, and if we've missed you, we, we do apologize. But it doesn't look like we have any questions. And with that, I think, oh, we have a question. Wait, just one second, I'm going to give you the mic just so we can hear you, because we have people watching on WebEx who will hear silence and fuzziness. So there you go. And you probably don't want the microphone, but I'm going to give it to anyone.
Um, I'm not sure who to ask, but we're, because we're a recreational community, people use our lake a lot, and now that the weather's getting warmer, we're going to have people flooding into town that don't know what we've been going through. Has anybody thought about testing the waters, putting up signs if they're not going to be safe to be in the water, or just letting the community know, can we be using the, the lake this year?
Very good question. I don't see a lot of people who might want to answer that, other than my colleague Mark Woods, who is with the regional district and spends a lot of time in Tulamene, his family's been here for many years.
Thank you, Eric. I do know that the Interior Health Authority is the agency that monitors water quality. We do have public beaches within our regional district, and, and we actually have a mechanism, we have staff that go out and do that testing. And then those tests are provided through the IH group. They notify us if there's higher levels. So that is an excellent point. Um, we don't have any public beaches here ourselves, but we know that the parks programmed them, B C Parks, that's, uh, certainly one of them. So what I'll do is follow up with my colleagues at B C Parks, find out if they have a testing process, and that would certainly be a mechanism for us to get a test on the water. Yeah, thanks for raising that.
Yeah, it's a very good reminder for anyone, uh, who visits any area to have that situational awareness of what might be going on. I think we're probably good for the evening. We all want to get home and see our families, maybe watch some TV, I'm not sure. Uh, but thank you so much, really appreciate your time. Again, to all of the people who were our presenters tonight and helped. So Danny, is that a question there online? Oh, thank you. Okay. All right, thanks again, everyone. Have a great night and a safe drive home.